今天天气很好今天天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好今天的天气很好
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of District Heights work session. It is Tuesday, February the 25th, 2025, and it is seven o'clock PM. And I call this meeting to order. As the commission had a chance to review the agenda in its entirety. And if you are ready, I will take a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I, Vice Mayor Gomez, move that the city commission approve the agenda for February 25th, 2025, city meeting.
Could I get a second?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for a zero. Thank you for that. So at this point, we have a public comment?
We had two public comments, but I don't think they're present.
Okay, okay. So if they come in a little later, we'll move them down to the bottom of the agenda. Okay. So next, we have action items. The first one is the approval of the minutes. As the commission had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting. And if you are ready, I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that the city commission approve the minutes for February 6th, 2025, city meeting.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Selma, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. A motion carries for a zero. The number two item of action items is the budget survey report. Staff Kelly Bithia and David Street.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before Kelly walks you through the survey results, I want to provide a little bit of background because it's been a minute since we've had a budget item before the commission and also provide one last budget update. So the commission was looking for additional ways to engage residents in the budgeting process this year as a continued expansion on your improved budget processes over the last couple of fiscal years. What the commission decided on for this budget season was to launch a community budget survey. The commission viewed a couple of different example questions and example surveys that are available throughout the recent region and provided some comments and direction to staff on the same. We launched the survey over the course of late January into February, and we have the results for the commission here. I would ask that if there's specific or discrete guidance that the commission wishes to give that will inform the proposed budget, which is coming up in early March, to please give it from the dais tonight. Recall, you've already given revenue guidance. And so we're underway preparing the proposed budget with that guidance. But if there are priorities that you want to focus on or you catch on to something from the budget survey that you would like to see incorporated or at least included in a budget proposal, do please let me know. I also wanted to confirm that we did receive final revenue numbers from the state for the real property assessments. And so those are tracking exactly how we expected them to. And so there's no, there's not going to be any major differentiation from what was presented to you earlier in the month. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Bithia.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents, colleagues, and friends. My name is Kelly Bithia, Communications Director for the City of District Heights. Please accept the results of this survey as submitted. Going over the data analysis breakdown first so that you can have a better idea of what all the charts mean later on down the road. The breakdown is as follows. Demographics and residency, priority initiatives, program funding preferences, budget adjustment preferences, and then finally, comments and suggestions. Moving on with demographics and residency. Well, before I start that, I just wanted to shout out to the residents of District Heights and those who actually filled out the survey. We had a whopping 103 entries, which is great. My goal was 100 so that we could have some nice round numbers for percentages and the like. So we have a nice pool to look at, and it's substantive data, I would think, given our population here and history of submissions in the past. So I think this is a nice capture of what the residents are thinking and feeling. So moving on from that, as far as demographics. If you look at the chart, 97% claim that they are residents of the City of District Heights. I will note that we did not ask them to put down addresses. So we don't know whether they are in the incorporated city, but they do claim that they live in the City of District Heights. So at the very least, they are in the area when talking about demographics and residency. Age distribution, the majority of the people who submitted entries were over the age of 65. Our seniors always show out for us, so that's also to be expected. Priority initiatives. Frankly, and David and I were talking about this earlier, most of what you're going to see in this data isn't something you haven't heard of before, isn't something that we're not already doing. But it is nice that frankly, the residents, contributors to the survey and the commission are on one accord on what needs to happen in the city. So with priority initiatives, the most frequently selected for the next five to 10 years as far as priorities was economic development and revitalization, community programs, and enhancement of public safety and police services. As far as program funding, the most favorite programmed areas were community services, economic development, and public safety. When it comes to budget adjustments, the most preferred methods for maintaining a balanced budget were pursuing grants or alternative funding sources, reduction of specific programs or services, indicating a willingness to reassess and prioritize, reprioritize city services. And lastly, introduction or increase of fees for certain city services. It was less popular, but it was there as a selection. Comments and suggestions. The most common ones were more community engagement and programs. We've heard that before. Economic development and job opportunities, calls for business incentives, job training and revitalization of commercial areas in the City of District Heights. Public safety and infrastructure, concerns about city infrastructure, road maintenance, and the like. And lastly, under this category, we're talking about budget transparency and efficiency. The submissions talked about suggestions for transparent budget management and efficient use of resources. And you can look at the summary of the key findings that we're going to go over in depth in the slide presentation. So each slide represents a question that was on the survey. So you're looking at the findings for each question. For, again, do you reside in the City of District Heights? 97% said yes. If they said no, you see the responses there. It was only three responses, and the alternative. What's most interesting is the next slide where the question was, click and drag the following initiatives from top of, from the top priority to the lowest priority according to what you think. The most, the most popular answer that was ranked number one was enhancement of public safety and police services. So that's what this means. So it, in, it says 516 responses. That means that the, it was five selections, and they rearranged them to what they wanted to be on the survey itself. It was still 103 entries, but they counted each response in JotForm. But nevertheless, it is still 103 people who were surveyed, right? The next most popular answer, ranked number four, was development and maintenance of parks and recreational facilities. The number two options, this means that this many people ranked this option number two on the survey. That was tied for infrastructure improvement as well as economic development. Any questions so far? Okay. You can look at your own volition regarding the rationale behind some of these answers on the next page. I want to focus on the next one with the pretty colors, the, to accommodate the new priorities for fiscal year 2026. 43% said pursuing grants or funding alternative funding sources. So it is clear that people of District Heights want more opportunities for grants so that we can have more money coming in. The next most popular answer was basically reorganizing what the budget already is, tapping into savings and the like. And then you can see the other rankings below. Everything else is a suggestion, an individual suggestion. So I can have you read that at your leisure. And then lastly, the very last slide is the demographic makeup in terms of age. So you can see that 30, almost 40% of the responses came from citizens aged 65 and over. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
This is great. It's good information.
At least we know that we had already started making some changes.
Right, right. And, and I'm sure, you know, if, as David can, go into what those changes have been. But from what my tenure here, it is clear that what you guys have been doing as a commission is aligned with what the residents of District Heights want. So as far as I'm concerned regarding this survey, you all are on the right track as far as improvements and initiatives that you guys have set forth.
No questions? Good report?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Will was the survey posted at?
So the survey was hosted on JotForm. It was the easiest way to get it out to the community. I created a QR code for it. There was a social media ad campaign for Instagram and Facebook to push this out. I also believe I put it on Nextdoor as well. I, all our typical channels, so Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, Constant Contact, as well as Word of Mouth. Thank you.
It was in the Herald too, right?
It was in the Herald. Pretty sure it was in the Herald as well. The survey ended, I believe, on Valentine's Day.
Yeah, we, I believe we advertised it in the Herald. The questions themselves were not.
Correct.
But that we were doing one and had to get to it, I believe, was.
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns?
Great survey.
I can just make a comment, but it's, it's great to get some quantitative, and there's even some qualitative information. Like I see some folks put some comments on the reasoning of their, of their rank choice. And I also noticed that the priorities that are highlighted are sort of interconnected, right? So the economic development and revitalization, doing that will be able to enhance our public service and our police services, right? Being able to reinvest that commercial tax base into the services that we provide, which also includes public safety and our programs to our seniors and our youth, which there seems to be a lot of support there for those programs that's coming out of the survey. So it's, it's good to get some data from everybody, aside from the conversations that I know that we all have. And this, excuse me, is growing the data sets that we have from various surveys that we have. So we know that as we're trying new things, we're continuously getting feedback in any way possible. So this is, this has been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, there, and you can see in the slide deck, there were plenty of answers. I didn't want to read it verbatim. We would be here all night. But feel free to read them at your leisure and, and, you know, take it into account when you make your decisions.
If there aren't any other questions or concern, David, did you want to expound on the results? And what we're already doing?
Sure, I certainly can. So I'm going to take us up to, I'm going to cover two items. I'll hit the revenue pieces first. Pursuing grants or alternative funding sources. We have had some success pursuing grants, particularly for youth services and in the police department. That's where we tend to be strongest. Where we tend to struggle for grants are areas that are a little bit more resident focused. I'm thinking arts, I'm thinking parks. Although where we're trending to this year is focusing more applications on defraying the cost of capital improvements, which could include things like parks or art in the public right of way. For those areas, we tend to work more with public-private partnerships. So we have an Art in the Public Right of Way pilot underway with Marlboro Pike Partnership and the Neighborhood Design Center, which is of, you know, minimal cost to the city because we're having the design work comped by those organizations. With respect to reserves and savings, over the course of the last two fiscal years, we have not tapped reserves significantly. We have been able to rely on relatively lower spending and utilization of ARPA funds for a lot of those one-time purchases that you would typically tap reserves for. What that's done is put our reserves in a very healthy position to where we could carry forward a fairly significant amount of those reserves into the FY '26 budget in terms of not just carry forward from the prior fiscal year, but fund balance itself. So pot of money sitting in a bank account that's not really restricted and could be pulled for use. The proposed budget will probably include some of that. But given the overall funding climate at the state and federal level, I'm hesitant to pull too much. A good rule of thumb for operating reserves is anywhere from 10% to 20%, depending on your situation of your overall operating budget. We will exceed that, just in terms of available cash. And so we do need to draw it down a bit so that that money is, is working for the community as opposed to sitting in a okay yielding interest bank account. So the FY '26 budget will include that. I, I do plan on, on giving the commission some room to dial that up or down, depending on your comfort level. And so do, do be on the lookout for that. You know, we are going through a point of stabilization. And so there will probably be a mix of reductions and expansions in the FY '26 budget in terms of service. Over the last two fiscal years, we've changed a lot in terms of how we deliver services and how we review those services. There are some things that we've had that may have made themselves redundant as a result of that, and some things where we need to continue to invest to see further dividends in the community. I don't expect that to be a large part of FY '26, but there will be proposals for you to consider as a part of that. And then we have already initiated and planned to continue throughout the first half of the calendar year, a review of the city's fee structure. So senior services came to, I think, a month ago and proposed fees. And we are continuing that. I know the police department wants to do a pretty significant review of their structure for both regulatory and law enforcement related fees. It's probably about time for that. It's been 15, 20 years since those were seriously looked at. And one of the trends that we're continuing down is differentiating between costs for residents and costs for non-residents. And one of the trends that we're continuing down is differentiating between costs for residents and costs for non-residents. We know we have a lot of non-resident neighbors who like to come commune with us here in the city. But unfortunately, they are not paying for that. And so we need to take a serious look to see how much of those activities are being borne by the taxpayer as opposed by the service user. So do look for more of that, particularly in the areas of parks, recreation, senior service, and maybe one or two others. That's what I have for, for revenue for the time being. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that before I move on to additional priorities.
Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure.
So, thank you for that. One thing that I would love to see as far as like, you know, budget priorities, as far as the more impact of just overall finances is pretty much, I know we're in a deficit in far as the state and the county. But I mean, but I do think we, we can pretty much prioritize a little bit of ask as a commission to the county council to kind of support a lot of the initiatives that we have that align with their priorities as well. And I think, you know, we do have a council person in our district that has the same priorities as us on certain aspects of her priorities. So I do think, you know, when that additional funding is needed, I think, you know, maybe we can kind of ask to reach out a little bit and, and kind of have to ask as a commission if, if my colleagues agree. But I think, I do think we should definitely be utilizing our services, you know, and see if we are aligned in certain aspects of, especially since we're in a budget deficit.
So that just goes back to our meeting with Acting County Executive last week. And we talked about the services that we provide on this side of town. Youth Services Bureau, the Senior Center, and, I'm missing one.
No, you're, you're on the right track. And so we get credit in the way that local government taxes are structured in Prince George's County. The county assesses a tax to deliver services on real property valuations. Municipalities can assess a tax, and then those two count against each other, right? And so you're able to, as a municipality, basically take credit for some of the services that you deliver. I would say that that is not comprehensive. And so one of the things that we have coming online that we wouldn't necessarily get credit for, although we're footing the cost for, and county residents or can and do come and avail themselves of the service as a senior center, right? It's a similar situation with family and youth services. Our service footprint is larger than the incorporated city, particularly in those two areas. So, you know, to, to relate one comment to the other, I would say those would be our two focuses. If we do seek additional county funding, you know, additional support in the, the youth services area and additional support in the seniors services area are going to pay off a lot for us because we're, again, bearing the cost for both residents and non-residents and have a limited way to defray that.
So at least it was, we talked about that because I don't think they think about the services that we provide here in City District Heights. And because of the senior center activities that we have, we have the Sports and Learning Center. And then we have the Allentown Road Senior. So we're like in the middle servicing people where they don't have to travel a long ways. And so I just wanted to make sure that they knew that we provide all these services, but we can't afford to keep providing all these services and, you know, they need to help us out. And so moving forward, we are starting a partnership with the community relations because they realize that they want to focus more on senior services as well. And so I think moving forward, they would be a great partner where they would give us some type of financial support to continue in the community to provide services beyond the incorporated city. So we're just trying to put that in front of them at all times, even though we are at a deficit. But, you know, we need to say what we're doing at all times.
In terms of planned initiatives, you know, there's a kind of three clear areas in the survey results that I do want to speak to. The top of those results are the most frequently responded to is enhancement of public safety and police services. That is something that we've taken seriously, particularly over the last two budget cycles. I think mid-year, last year, we added two positions. And the chief and I are always, you know, conspiring as to how we can get more officers on the road. And so we are going to try and focus in on that for FY26 and beyond. But we're also going to be looking at, you know, how could we leverage those formulaic funding mechanisms through the state and others that offset the cost of law enforcement services? This is one that we do get credit from for the county, but it's not full credit. And so we would be interested in that as well. In terms of, of infrastructure and maintenance, we are in the process and actually the closing stages of reprogramming the 2020 Series A bond. And so we will be able to do, spend those funds on capital projects over the entire municipal campus. So that's all of this area, the fields, the courts, the old wing of the building, the new wing of the building. And we have dedicated, as of last year, coming into this year, dedicated hard infrastructure dollars as well. Coming into FY26, that will have a balance of about four to five hundred thousand dollars. So the city will be starting from a pretty, you know, pretty good position of strength in terms of paving and sidewalk projects. And then toward the end, we have economic development and revitalization of commercial areas. The city has a small commercial corridor. And so our focuses have also been on expanding that commercial corridor. That's a longer process to do the right way and to do in a way that makes sense for both the city and folks, businesses that you want to opt in to the city. So we're at a point where the rubber is going to meet the road on both our expansion initiatives and our economic development initiatives at various points over the course of calendar 2025. But in terms of economic development, we have twelve hundred feet on Marlboro Pike, on either side of Marlboro Pike that constitute our commercial tax base. And so what we're really focused on for the first half of, of 2025 is, you know, starting to put in real legwork to expand that square footage, right? So that we have more space to attract more businesses, to help people expand, locate, and improve. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Comment?
Yes, commission.
So, thank you again. I did a ride along with the code enforcement and I really, you know, one of the things that I saw is that we, we definitely need more support there as far as the code enforcement and the services. I would, you know, I think that we definitely should prioritize that a little more as far as funding because I know that them, them guys don't need help. You know, we have a lot of residents that are comfortable with what's happening in the city. And they're just, you know, they're normalizing their activities. And I think, you know, we need more support for them to, to get their job done. And, you know, and I noticed that, you know, a lot of times we, we still are, are missing out on extra income from those services and, and those, you know, activities. Like, you know, we, we, you know, one thing that I also notice is that we have a lot of business signs in, in these yards. Like, I mean, that's crazy. Like, I, I, I mean, people own businesses and it's, it's more business signs than for sale signs in the yards. And I'm like, are we charging for these yard signs? Like, are we charging for these signs? Like, chief, are we, do we charge people to put the signs up in their yard for business?
Yeah.
Come up and, and talk about, and talk about the code enforcement part and the learning curve and all this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To answer the question, this current question of, sorry. Yes, for, for sale signs, it's twenty dollars, twenty, twenty-five dollars per for sale sign. So usually, that's not really known, so usually when we see that, we'll contact the builder. They'll either have to take it down or pay that fee. There is people who are advertising their, if their home is an in-home office, there is a permit you have to get for a residential business permit that they apply for, for in-home business permit. In terms of our efforts with code enforcement, we are fully staffed now. We have three, we have divided them into three different sections. So we have one who's strictly focusing on our business district now, one who does our commercial and residential business properties, and one who does just the home properties. So that's something they started within the last two weeks, that they're starting to get acclimated to that. We fully, we, we need to work on some more technology-based issues with them. So we are still continuing to outfit these vehicles with things that make them more efficient in the car. So I know we're putting more printers in the cars, working on upgrading, getting more tablets and in-car computers right now. So they don't have to come back to the office as much to write citations and/or warnings. So it's little things, we're trying to put some more, what was I saying? Place, things in place to track productivity. So especially before we open up, I'm gonna start putting them in there for the weekends. So me and deputy are big on tracking productivity to make sure we're getting work done during certain hours a day. So, so as soon as we get some of those measures in place, we'll be rolling out the weekend code enforcement hours and then anything else as we see fit.
So, so a quick question. Do you feel like one is enough to handle the resident services? Or do you, do you think that more is needed? Because, you know, when I was riding around with him, that was a lot of like, you know, there was a lot of time that he had to kind of, you know, deal with. And I think, you know.
And, and I'd just like to, if I may. I agree with Commissioner Tillman. I do, I ride the city every weekend. And because my, my habit is to snatch those signs down, those illegal business signs that they post. But I do notice some repeat things that just have not been addressed, things that have not been addressed for several months, things that CAP has reported, things that I've reported. I know we needed to get these guys trained up. But after a while, you know, that can only go so far. But I do think, you know, I agree with Commissioner Tillman. And this all goes and ties into public safety as well. When you have these code enforcement issues that linger, they lead into crime because people think that, you know, that the community, we don't care. And as Commissioner Tillman said, you know, some of these people are comfortable because they think, you know, we don't care. So I think, David, it, it seems like we do have room in the budget for an additional, even a part-time.
Well, if I can comment on what you said before we go there, I don't, I think we're good staffed up in the front end of code. I think we need more help on the admin side. Some of the issues you're referring to, I can think of three properties right now that are nuisance longer than six months. Those properties have been addressed or awaiting court dates. So I'll say what has take place is what's called an abatement order, that we have to get an order from the court to go on property to clean large items such that there's abandoned cars or anything that we can share over a certain amount of value. We don't want to go on tape when we get the court order, so we're backed by the courts and lawfully going on your property and remove such things. So I know there's three houses to date right now that have received municipal infractions and now waiting for court dates for the abatement order to come through, for the court to grant the abatement to go on there and force clean this property, such as we did with the house with the tires that on Foster, Foster Street.
But again, do you, so you think that the admin side would help ease some of the?
Right now, we're experiencing, so January, February is our busy time of month, the first part of the year because if you know, our business licenses and rental licenses run on a calendar year. So after the beginning of the year, it's now time for everyone to re-up and get your rental licenses and business licenses. So right now, we have a rush of people coming and do that. So we're receiving a backlog and trying to get those approved and issued out. So I believe a little bit more help as we're continuing to look for more admin, but putting more admin staff on just those things. Because we also, as we're approving those, we also have a shortage of admin staff to help approve the record requests that's coming in, whether it be for crash reports, incident reports, and or video footage from the state's attorney's office. So we're seeing we're getting influx in those type of administrative things that are kind of bottoming down, kind of the end results of what we need to see.
And that would go for, and, and that won't be impacted by our rental inspections? Because I know we have.
Getting them done, no. Getting your license out, yes. Right now, we're doing Woodland Springs, which is about, what, five hundred something units? So just a few days out a week, we have all three over there trying to tackle that down. So today, they got each inspector did sixty apiece units today. So that doesn't leave much to go out and do anything else. So they can't be issued their rental licenses until their units are inspected, right? And we're required by law to do rental inspections. So business inspections were not required, we're doing periodically. But rental inspections for health and safety reasons, required by law to do those every single year. So we have to get those done before issuing your rental license.
Right, but I, I do, Vice Mayor Gomez and I, we are your liaison. I'd just like you and David to know that if, you know, I do agree with Commissioner Tillman. If there's a need, we, we do have room that, you know, we don't, this is something important to the city. It ties hand in hand with public safety. And also the, the efforts, the beautification efforts that we do have with our city and where we're trying to go in the future. And we don't want to burn the guys out either. You know, that's important for employee satisfaction and work-life balance. We don't want them to be overwhelmed. So if they, if, you know, if they need help, you know, let us know.
And if I also just want to add to that as well, I think the implementation side is one thing. And I know Commissioner Harcourt and I have been discussing revising our entire code of ordinances. So if folks remember, maybe about eighteen to two years ago, we did our fencing code, right? Because we had so many exceptions coming up. And so we did a deep dive into making sure the intent of how we wanted to, or I guess the guidelines of what we wanted for fencing was reflected in our code of ordinances. And I really do think we're at a point where we need to do that for the entirety of our code. Because we have a, we have a different approach with residents, how we want to do enforcement, proactivity versus reactivity, what we want the look and feel of our community to be. And then we also have in a different approach that we want to take to our businesses, right? So every summer, we have the same problem with our businesses, keeping the grass cut, keeping the trash away. And the question is, even if it's being implemented properly from code enforcement perspective, is that even getting to the heart of the problem? And I think we've got to the point where we've realized, no, we're not getting to the heart of our problem. Our code of ordinances is quite dated and it's time for us to revisit that. So as we have these conversations around budget, because that's really pertinent for staffing, staffing conversations, I'd also like us to consider really digging into our code of ordinances over this next calendar year so that we can make sure that the intention of how we want to actually, how our community looks is going to be reflected in what the code officers are going to be able to implement.
I would say that your code does not currently reflect a proactive approach, right? And so your code, particularly with the residential property maintenance standards, I think was less touched in ninety-nine? Somewhere, somewhere around there. Which, you know, we've got different tools available, we've got different staffing, we have different needs in the area. To the chief's point, a, a lot of what we see with our repeat and habitual offenders are, they've learned the game, right? And they run the game. And they run the game. Up until right toward the end, whenever he's going to have to drop the hammer, then they comply. And then we are left with no choice but to reset the clock because that's what the law says to do. And so that's probably the best way to get it, uh, what you're looking for. We can also certainly discuss options in, in work session for resourcing. We can talk about what that looks like when police and code are, are up for the commission. You can, you know, have those discussions and that information.
Right, and again, um, I think we don't have to reinvent the wheel on this. I mean, there are other municipalities, other, um, areas, towns that are doing this with their codes, where they have, um, they set standards for businesses with fastened improvements, what they want them to look like. You go to Columbia, they have a, a ordinance that tells the businesses, this is what you're supposed to look like. You know, um, you go to Arlington, it tells them, this is what your business is supposed to look like. I mean, a, a lot of these things are not expensive to paint your home or to nail a shutter that's falling off or to put a garage door up that's been off for three years, you know? These things impact not only the resident, but it impacts your next-door neighbor's property values. Having an abandoned home impacts the property value of the whole city. Definitely a property that's next door to it or on the block. So I think we've done a great job with getting those abandons offline, um, in the community. But I do think we need to take a look as Commissioner Tillman, say, we are missing, uh, added revenue opportunities. And I think the, the, the added revenue would be an opportunity for us to actually pay for the cost of additional help. So we need to get that help online and we need to start looking, if you and David can sit together and find out, contact MML, look at some ordinances that you think may be helpful and get them in front of, um, Vice Mayor and myself. And we can take a look and start doing some things to get some help because we need to really take our city to, you know, the next level, um, that we want to go to. That's going to be the only way we'll be able to draw the businesses that we want to bring here. Otherwise, we'll keep getting what we get.
And one final thing. Yeah, so, and I know you, you're saying you're comfortable now with what you have, but we have to be thinking proactively. You know, you have three people now, but you might not have three people next year. So, you know, you always want that backup. And we talk a little bit about, you know, filling that gap. And when someone's missing, you need to retrain that person. So I think we need to have enough people on staff right now that, that's, that's trained so we don't have to start over next year. Because if you, because you know, we done went through a couple.
I, I will say this, if it's the difference between a police officer and code officer, I want a police officer.
We can get you both.
So if that, that's what we're saying, then we're okay with that. So I'll add another one.
You can definitely get that.
So I want to make sure that the actions today here don't impose that I can't put more police officers on the street. Cause that, to me, is the number one priority, is the safety of the city. Other than, you know, the code can handle it and they're doing well. But I think we need to also keep in mind that we do need a larger police force than what we currently have now. Even if we're close to being a hundred percent and we need to surpass that once we reach that full capacity.
We understand that, Chief, and I think I understand what Commissioner Tillman is saying. But I think we can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time.
If that's what you're saying, then let's, let's do it then. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, I agree, um, you know, with code, it's probably, if you're looking to staff up in that area or to have a more active approach, that is much easier to offset with, you know, fee and other related revenues, right? Cause there's a direct correlation between the, the cost, whether it's license processing fees and inspection fee and what have you, between the two positions. And so, you know, when we bring that back to the commission, we can say, you know, for this adjustment in fee, it gets you this number of hours of admin support or this number of hours of code on the street. We can certainly prepare something like that.
Yeah, we should look at all of our fees. I don't think our fees have been touched in years. And, um, even some of our, what is our towing fee?
Um, seventy-five dollars.
You know, so.
I think we're one of the lowest in the county.
Right, so I think, right, and so that's, we need to, you know, it's not that we're trying to, these are not, our residents aren't the people that are doing these things. These are people from, you know. So I think we need to look at that too. We, we have to look at everything. What, I'm looking at one of the, one of the suggestions on here. They don't want us to raise the property taxes, so we don't have to fill in the gap some kind of way, so. But we're not being punitive, it's that we do have to maintain our city to a certain standard. One thing that I always say is we deserve nice things. And so, um, but also those require maintenance and it's not fair for a person that takes care of their home or their business to have to suffer because they have a, a neighbor, business or resident who chooses not to. And that's our job to make sure that they don't suffer the, you know, the consequences of that, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Jennifer had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask if some of the individuals that are going to be coming on board for the resident and business services, I know they're going to be cross-trained. Is there any way you're, you're speaking that you really need help on the administrative side? Just wondering if maybe some of those individuals could be cross-trained to assist the police department, code enforcement with that as well? Cause we're bringing people on board, they might as well, you know, be trained in all areas.
Yeah, that's definitely their intent, to have a cross-training at office. As you, you're well aware, sometimes the recruiting process and getting a correct candidate who's able to multitask and handle that situation is, uh, challenging itself. But yeah, that's definitely the game plan when we get there. As we, um, keep adding people in the office, there, we're trying to, uh, cross-train them now as we speak to.
Cause Mayor Miller and I remember, uh, gentleman John Lamar, who was basically a one-man code enforcement, very, very aggressive. City has grown over the years and I do see that there's a need for additional, uh, code enforcement officers. But I think we could probably use some of the folks that we, that we have and use that budget money for something else, but that's just how I think. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Great job, too, Chief. We ain't trying to beat you up.
Where are we? No. So we're done on the budget priorities. Okay. So we're on number three, senior services FTE request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Clerk, Distinious Guest, and Residents. My reason for the latest correspondence to the Commission is to ask for some much-needed help for the senior center. When we started with senior center, uh, during the early opening, we had, uh, very limited participation. As soon as we started our original program or our program that we planned for the senior, including, uh, the Sage program, also lunch programs also started, uh, our population has grown exponentially. So just on a face level, only having three FTEs is difficult. If somebody takes off a day, like we have, Ms. Barbara was extremely helpful for us, Ms. Farmer. Ms. Barbara's on vacation right now, it's hard for us to cover the spread. We have a dedicated core of, of volunteers. Even though we have twenty-three registered, we have about ten that come back all the time that we can count on. But even with them, they have things due, appointments and so on and so forth, so, uh, it makes it a little difficult. Having these two part-time positions will allow us to, one, be able to safely cover the population that comes in. We have special events, sometimes over sixty or seventy people. And also to smoothly monitor those programs as they go on a daily basis. So, uh, that is what I have to put forth. And also as we grow, um, we would like to have staff in place so we can grow to the numbers that we would like to grow to in terms of daily and monthly participation. Over to questions.
Madam Mayor, there is one report of this report that is missing, that is my fault. That is your current vacancy savings. Your current vacancy savings minus the action you have already taken sits around three hundred thousand dollars. So your total personnel budget floats between three point seven and three point nine for the current fiscal year. Due to vacancies, you have about three hundred or so, um, to work with to fund the positions. I can tell you, like the positions you approved the la, during the prior mid-year FTE request, if you approve these, we are able to just build them into the, the proposed budget. I don't anticipate having a, an issue there. As I said in the prior presentation, we do plan on pulling a little bit of reserves and we do plan on pulling, um, FY twenty-five fund balance forward. So we do plan on carrying some revenue from, or carrying some budget from FY twenty-five into twenty-six just because of how spending is tracking this year.
Any questions, comments from the Commission?
Question.
Sure, Commissioner Jennifer.
So you're asking for two part-time FTEs. What would be the, the positions of those individuals?
So it would be program assistants. Right now, the way we have it structured, we have a program assistant one, which is more, as I see it, administrator, helping with like desks and programming. That is a much heavier ask is that I'm learning in terms of functionality. Rental logins and that kind of thing are no problem. Like you, I can do that with my limited training. When we get into program, well, uh, reprogramming each month for each of the, the sets of programs that we have for each one, it takes a long time. And we already have limited staff in terms of the front desk functioning and also class monitoring. So right now, we look at them for cafe, uh, cafe functioning, replenishing, running the cafe, helping with the food program, we're up near forty people that every day and that takes a, a whole. So any one person that's out right now, it, it's tough for us to function. So I have to jump in sometimes, which I don't mind doing. But we're looking to go in a lot of different directions and as we look at that. But even our current functioning is challenged by having such few people. So those folks would just fill in where we need them now with, uh, everyday functional classes, monitoring, floor monitoring, and also we have special events.
Mr. Street, as part-time employees, with those individual, what type of benefits would they be eligible for?
So the way that these positions are structured is that they are not benefit-eligible positions. They are hourly positions. So we're looking to hire in the twenty to twenty-five hour a week timeframe. We have one full-time person who was transferred from the police department who carries a lot of our front desk and informational services. What we're looking to do is supplement that and allow essentially any one of the three people that work over there to take a day off without having to pull from different parts of the organization to back them.
Thank you.
So you can think of this as analogous to the part-time positions that Recreation had approved about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
And if I may.
Okay, sure.
Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and I remember talking with you when you first came on board. This is something that we kind of anticipated with your growth. So I, I'm, I'm all for it. I think this is, I'm surprised that it took this long. You're a tough cookie. You hung in there.
Well, I just want also, I have to, Mike, to thank the three people I have now. Cause they made this possible for me to get this far to ask for this help.
Yeah.
And as our population grows, we have aspirations to get to other programming, a deeper level of service, and that requires management.
Yeah, cause work is out now.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I have one question. And this is on the, um, the, I guess, where we are transferring the funds from. So it says we're transferring from the administrative managerial position in Public Works. David, I know we've had a few discussions on FTEs in the department and how we needed to sort of transfer that for other organizational needs. Can you remind me which position this is coming from?
Um, so what we're doing is asking you create the FTE and we're saying we think we can absorb the cost. So we're not asking for dollars in this fiscal year. We're just asking for FTE authority to create the position. We did identify a little bit of a redundancy in another department with the prior, um, mid-year FTE requests. My observation about those is that those were much, much more complex and costly positions. And so we did have to look, the responsible thing to do was to look for an offset, which we found, um, which is going to get proposed to you in the FY twenty-six budget. These you can think of as entry-level or entry-level adjacent hourly positions. And so we're not looking for a, a hard offset for these.
I understand.
Okay. Okay.
You have a question, Commissioner Tillman?
Yeah, so what is the, the physical impact, like, I guess, next year for this, this type of, um?
So we're looking at a, at about fifty thousand dollars for the full year, give or take, is that? Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so for the remainder of this year, I mean, realistically, going out to recruitment and hiring, we're looking at absorbing about three months' worth of expenditures, maybe four if we get lucky and, and can hire right away. That's fifteen to twenty, I think, the type of position that we're hiring.
Okay, thank you, yeah, okay, alright, cool.
Any other questions or comments? So could I get a motion to approve the mid-year FTE requests?
Sure, I'll take it. I will take it, okay, alright. Aye, Commissioner Tillman moved that the city commission approved the mid-year FTE request figure in one of the February twenty twenty-five, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five staff reporting for additional deliberations to the FY twenty-six budget process.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Harcourt, second.
All in furlough.
Aye.
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 Motion carries forward, zero.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Thomas, did you already have some fillers that people would be interested for additional income for a part-time position?
This is up to seniors and some of, uh, regular volunteers to see if they can manage this.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, number four, uh, Commission Chamber AV update, David.
Mayor, if I can, the people who signed up for public participation have joined us. Could we let them speak?
Let's finish this one and then we'll add that in and then with the announcements, okay?
Alright, thank you, Mayor Miller. I will be brief. It is my pleasure to present to you, um, a contract award for a very reputable firm, Human Circuit, to finish off our upgrade of our television broadcast equipment. So, um, it took us a long time to, uh, you know, the pandemic changed a lot of things and it took us a long time to find a firm that specialized in this particular area of the market. There's about two and a half in the DMV region that, that still kind of focus on public access, not-for-profit, type of streaming that we do. So we do a very different kind of TV than most other places. And so over the, the closing months of twenty twenty-four and the opening months of twenty-five, we finally got a firm in to really take a deep dive into, um, our existing equipment as well as working on building us a quote that integrates, uh, fully with the equipment for streaming and recording that we've already put into place. And so you can think of this as just the second phase of our AV upgrade process. But I would like to, um, take just one quick moment to talk you through the logistics. So last year, we updated almost all of the audio/video components in the room from the televisions that we are looking at, at the wall that display the agenda and the live feed, um, for the commission to the equipment that controls it. for the commission to the equipment that controls it, to the cameras, to the audio capture equipment, to the devices that push the stream out to whichever platform we happen to be using. All of the equipment that was pulled out of the room was on the low end, 15 years old, and some of it was much older. Some of that equipment, we were able to retain and continue to use, but I'm not going to call out which equipment that is because I don't want to jinx it. But it's still going strong. What we did not have the opportunity to replace at the time was the television broadcast equipment. We had a couple of things up in the air that have since resolved, which is allowing us to move forward, one of which, finding a qualified firm that specializes in TV, second of which is closing out the last cable franchise agreement, and third of which is closing out our, you know, kind of Verizon Comcast connectivity issues. We have dealt with those and so we're ready to move forward here. What this proposal entails is really adding on to our current platform and reorganizing and adding a small amount of redundancy into our recording, broadcast, and webcast capabilities. So the main thing that this replaces, I want to show circling right here, you can't read it particularly well because the schematic is small, is cable cast video. What that does is it's a platform that allows you to make public service announcements, show information, play pre-recorded information in a way that, you know, modern, modern, that accommodates modern displays. The equipment that we have now, as I said previously, was really good about 10 or 15 years ago, but the market has since moved on to this type of equipment. So what we are going to be able to bring back are our standard public service announcements, our recordings, and most importantly, our meetings and our associated content. This will be a complete implementation, so we will be able to simultaneously stream, broadcast, and record. And we will be back up to fully functioning after having the owl in the room in 2020 and 2021.
Where is that owl?
Oh, we're using it for meetings in conference rooms. It gets used. But I say that in jest to point out how far we've, we have been able to come from basically the entire system shutting itself down in 2020 and 2021 to us being able to go forward and fully restore and improve the system here in 2024 and 2025. So this is about a six- or eight-week project, depending on lead times. So we should be able to be back up and running sometime in April. What we're, what we're looking at, as I said, is a firm, they have done this type of work from Fairfax City, Howard University, Town of the, many others. And is essentially what they're proposing is the cost-affordable industry standard. And so the total remainder on the project is about $35,000, which will close out the project in its entirety. And so we do have a proposal here for that. We have worked through some cost engineering of it already. And so I anticipate us to land somewhere close to this, if not a smidge under, because I do think we have some equipment that we are able to reuse. Not a lot because of its age, but some. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Sure, Commissioner Jennifer.
So Mr. Street, six-to-eight week project, is there, this is $35,000, is there any type of maintenance agreement that's attached to this as well?
Yes, this also includes training dollars and so our communication staff will be fully trained on the system. Where, you know, I will say that credit goes to particularly those two staffers to try and get caught up on the older system and we are still trying to get that to at least be able to provide some updated information in the interim. But yes, there is maintenance and training with these, with the figure.
I know that residents will be very pleased when the TV station is up and running again.
We're going to have to have an unveiling on this. Because it was a long time coming. Okay, any other questions before I ask for a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Sure.
Sure. Thanks. This is great news. I'm so glad that we're getting this back up and running. Two questions I have is, for those of us who don't have cable, like me, is there a way to access the television channel online?
Yes, but I don't want to overpromise and I don't know the details.
Okay.
But what I will say is our content will be cloud-based. And so you should, but I can get that answer and relay it back to the commission before I confirm.
Okay.
If not, you are able to review all of our live meetings and recordings on the city's official YouTube channel.
Right. Absolutely. And I'm also here, so I'm in the present. And my, my second question on this, again, I really don't want to downplay how big of a deal this is, that we're getting this up and running. I know it's taken a long time and so I appreciate everyone's patience. I appreciate everyone who's tried an alternative, getting on the live stream on YouTube, trying something new. But the reality is, this is just one example of so many infrastructural projects what we have to done that have been sitting for decades, literal decades. And so some of these, exactly, these are deferred maintenance that we now have to take on. The cost has tripled because they've, they were neglected for so many years. I mean, some of these things are literally older than I am. And so again, thank you for your patience as we've gotten to this point so we can really get this project started. My second question, though, is on the sole source. Can you just explain why we're sole sourcing this?
Yeah. This is a very niche area of the market. We're not commercial television. We're not looking for a lot of production equipment. We're looking for a very specific type of informational-only, not live most of the time, display. We're not actively directed and so we also need a platform. So that means we don't have somebody running the cameras 24/7 and somebody managing content 24/7, which means we need a very specific type of platform to meet the needs of the government and the residents. As I said, there's about two and a half firms that do this in the DMV region. We looked at all of them and this was the most, offered the most, the most value and the best timeline. So normally, this would be above the threshold that we would do a competitive bid for. We really only look to sole source if either A, we're writing an existing contract that has been publicly procured or we're in a situation like we are now where the thing that we're procuring is so narrow that we don't really have that much of a choice.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the sole source contract award.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Harcourt. Aye, Commissioner Jennifer, approve that the city commission approved the sole source contract award to Human Circuit in an amount not to exceed $35,000 and a, and direct staff, I'm sorry? Thirty-five, oh, $35,500 and direct staff to prioritize the Phase Two Commission Chambers AV upgrade.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Thank you. And we can check the box on this. In the last few months, I was able to visit other municipalities. Everybody has upgraded something in their chambers because a lot of them have old buildings as well. So we're not the only ones. But I'm glad we're, we're to the point where we can have the television stations. Thank you. So at this time, we do have, looks like we have guests in the room, public participation. We have Raina Stacy, Business Blessed Beauty and Barbara LLC.
Hi.
Are you, come on up to the podium.
Good evening. I will be, my first language is English, so I will be speaking for my mother.
Okay.
So hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn. This is my mother, Raina Stacy Beloit. So she is currently the owner of Blessed Beauty and Barbara LLC, which is a salon not too far from here, basically down the street. She recently opened towards the end of January. We were just looking to, you know, get her license so that she can have her business operating. We've gone through the process with the Maryland Board of Cosmetology as she is licensed also. She's been licensed for, basically since I was little, I'm currently 22, so many, many years of experience, including she did my hair, you know, so it's preferable. I am a great example of that, so. You know, she's, she's very humble, but I am proud of the work that she does at her shop.
Okay.
What's, what's the address?
6304 Marlboro Pike.
And so you're saying that you're waiting on your permit?
Yes, ma'am, because I've, we've done the application to the portal, made the payment, and so we're just looking for, you know, the final approval.
Okay. Chief, do you want to know? I'm the private final. But I don't have any other information other than there.
So point, point of clarification, it's informational. And so we will issue the license following the issue of the license, but we do take the opportunity and extend the option for business owners to present to the commission.
Oh, okay.
Because there's no action to take.
So we're just saying welcome.
So we're just saying welcome and, and what are your hours?
So on the weekends, we, my mom's currently operating from, sorry, I was getting mixed up. So on the weekends, it is nine to seven and then Monday to Friday, 10 to seven.
Okay, okay. And so you've already started doing business?
Yes.
Okay.
We've opened as of late January.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, welcome to the city of District Heights.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
So we have Ayana Patterson, House of Slay. Welcome, welcome. And so you're located at 6108 Old Silver Hill Road?
Yes.
Unit 220?
So I'm in the building where the King Pahn is. I'm sure you guys are familiar with a lot of businesses being in there. So my name is Ayana Patterson. I'm 29. I'm an esthetician. I specialize in eyelash extensions. So I'll be performing my services in this space, making it cozy for the women to, you know, come and have girl chat, get their lashes done, maybe some limited, like, wax services. I don't think I'll be doing, like, full facials and everything. But yeah, so I'm excited.
Okay, so when did you actually open?
I'm going to be opening next month.
Oh, next month, okay.
So I'm still waiting on, like, the used occupancy and everything to come through, so I have my inspection tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
What's the name of the business again?
House of Slay.
House of Slay.
Mm-hmm. So I started the business when I was 19 as a clothing brand and I'm just expanding that. So I've been performing my esthetician services for the past five years and I have a location in Waldorf that's like a full storefront. I sell supplies in there, so like, local estheticians can come buy their lash supplies and stuff like that. So this is just an extension of that.
Okay.
Yep, just a second location.
You have your lashes done right now?
No, I don't. I don't, you know, when you're like investing a lot, you're taking a break, being so busy, so yeah.
So, so I, welcome. So I'm always curious, so why'd you select District Heights to set up shop for your second location?
Well, this is where I was born and raised.
Okay.
So I went to Morgan State, that's where I started doing lashes towards the end of my college career. I ended up working corporate in Pennsylvania for a beauty company. And then I was just like, okay, I'd rather come back to where I'm from to really, you know, where my support really lies for my business to flourish, to really give it a chance. So, yeah.
Well, welcome, my.
Yeah, I love it here. So I see a lot of potential in, you know, the young girls in the community. So I just wanted to give back to where I'm from.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
So thank you guys for having me.
All right.
Welcome.
Welcome. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, question.
What, what will be the hours for your business once you're opening next month?
Yeah.
And please send us an invite of the grand opening.
Yes.
With food.
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be 9:30 to 6:30. So not too late because, you know, we don't want to be leaving out too late, so.
You're right, right.
Monday through Friday?
I'm actually going to be doing Saturday and Sunday because a lot of people are going back to work. So, you know, I want to be available. So right now, the schedule's just open and then I'll just see, like, how the customers are coming in and then I'll limit the schedule after, you know, I can get a feel for what the ladies are doing and, you know, especially with, you know, everybody having to go back to their nine-to-five, so.
Are you available for mobile service?
Yes. So even some of my customers are actually on the street that we're on. So I was like, this is cool. This is cool. I was like, they're probably going to be mad that I'm over here because usually I'm in Waldorf mainly, so they're having a drive, but.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome all the new businesses.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you, ladies, for coming out. Do any commissioners have announcements or comments this evening? I can't believe, wait a minute, let me look at this again.
No, it's right.
This is it. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we didn't make our bet.
I know, I know.
So any comments or announcements?
I just have one. I just want to, you know, give a shout out to our city clerk, Kenneth, on how he's been really doing the recaps and, you know, the city meetings. I know we, sometimes we're here a long time and I just want to say I appreciate you for just taking the time out to doing, you know. You know, it's the, you know, the minute spend's been really, looking really good lately and I, and I appreciate you taking the time out to do that, you know. Yeah, thank you.
Did you?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Recreation Department and Ms. Kelly Bethia for bringing retired Colonel Edna Cummings to the city last night with, for the showing of Six Triple A. And her book is coming out, I believe she said, May 8th or May 9th. So, yeah, it was really great. I've seen it a couple of times, but, yes.
Lot of great information. She was talking about a museum named after one of them in Columbia, Maryland. There's a post office in Buffalo, New York that's named after one of them. I mean, just stuff that we never even knew that happened in the state of Maryland. So we have to continue to promote this kind of thing. So, any other? Okay, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioner Harcourt moved to adjourn.
Could I get a second?
Vice Mayor Gomez seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Meeting has been adjourned.
All right.
8:17.